To the Smyrna Town Council meeting. Tonight, before we move into our meeting agenda, we do have a presentation by our Public Works Director, Tom Rose, on the I-24 Smart Corridor Project. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today about the I-24 Smart Corridor Project. About a year ago, Town of Smyrna, Laverne, Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, Metro Nashville, THP, Sheriff's Department, MTA, RTA, and a couple of other organizations were asked to get together to form a tactical advisory committee to discuss project. TDOT and FHWA has brought to us called I-24 Smart Corridor Project. A little bit about the, a little bit overview on the project. Since 2005, traffic volumes have been increasing by about 60% in the Rutherford County section of the I-24 corridor. In response to this increase, TDOT has initiated what's called an Integrated Corridor Management Project, which is the I-24 Smart Corridor Project. The objective of this project is to create a balanced responsive system to monitor and control traffic to improve the safety and improve travel time reliability in and out of Metro Nashville. Just as you know, it is not a project to completely decrease the amount of time it takes to travel this corridor. You're not going to see go from an hour and a half commute down to 30-minute commute. What this project is redesigned to do is provide that reliability so that you know you have more of a consistent travel time in and out of Rutherford County to Davidson County. Also want to introduce, sorry to mention this late, Mr. Matt Godey here from HDR. Kimley Horn and HDR were hired by TDOT to work on the design of this project. And Matt's here today if he has any more technical questions on it. Let's see, a little bit about the, want to also talk a little bit about the, some of the short-term deployments. Be mentioning here shortly, we have an October letting coming up for some of these short-term deployments and some future deployments on this project, and then answer any questions afterward. And feel free to stop me anytime you have any questions along the way. Looking at the map, if you were up here on the screen, you'll see there's about a 28-mile section of I-24 shown in blue. It goes from exit 53 on the north side of I-440 to exit 81, State Route 231 down in Murfreesboro. And there's a 28-and-a-half-mile section of Highway 41, also known as State Route 1 in red. There's also about 30 miles of connector roads in black connecting I-24 to Highway 41. For Smyrna, we're looking at Smyrna shown in the blue section there. That's particularly the connectors, arterial connectors are State Route 102 and 266, Lee Victory Parkway and Sam Ridley. Also, there's about 100, there's 123 traffic signals along that State Route 1 corridor and in the connector roads that go between State Route 1 and I-24. That's been working on along with 16 interchanges. The project, as I mentioned before, will have three separate deployments. We're looking at a short-term project deployment, intermediate, and long-term deployment. Let's see. A little about some of the, after we've been meeting for about a year, we have started developing some of the short-term deployments. This helps to lay the groundwork for the future integrated corridor management. Some of the short-term deployments include fiber installation to integrate between dynamic message boards, as well as some of the traffic signals that are along these connectors. Those black lines I showed you earlier between I-24 and State Route 1. Also, some signal system upgrades. A lot of that we're going to be doing with the ITS project, the Intelligent Transportation Project, Phases 1, 2, that are, that we're working on right now. We're getting ready to request funding for construction phase, as well as Phases 3, 4, and 5 of the ITS project. We're getting ready to embark on design on that portion of it. Dedicated short-range communication. What that is, is these little boxes that certain vehicles are going to, that people are going to be having in their vehicles, on some state vehicles, some city vehicles, and volunteers putting these devices in their vehicles. What this will do, dedicated short-range communications can be put in the traffic cabinets at certain traffic lights, and it'll be able to measure your travel time throughout the corridor. So it'll be able to say, pick up Steve. Steve's going to be able to see how long it takes him to get from one area to another, and average speeds, things like that. And they'll be able to use that to help further figure out any problems with the system, or they can make improvements to operational benefits. We're also looking at ramp acceleration, deceleration, lane extensions, allow people to get off of the interstate and slow down, get off, get off the interstate before they start slowing down to help keep traffic flow moving, as well as increasing the length of the acceleration lane, so people can get up to speed a little bit faster before they move over into a travel lane. Dynamic message signs along the way, some emergency refuge pull-off areas. If there's not a exit ramp nearby, they're going to be looking at certain places to add these pull-offs, as well as increasing towing response time and improving emergency response times as well. As I mentioned earlier, the construction letting is going to be October 5, 2018, and some of the short-term deployments that I mentioned earlier that are going to be in this October letting are going to be the emergency pull-offs, ramp lane extensions, ground monitored, dynamic message boards to let people know travel times along certain sections of the corridor, increasing the fiber network, the dedicated short-range communication, like I mentioned earlier, that integrates between the vehicles, and as well as some traffic signal system upgrades. Some of the other short-term deployments that we're looking to roll out later on toward the end of 2018 is the increasing towing response time, some of the traffic signal coordination, improving emergency response times, as well as coordinated traffic management center procedures coordinating between TDOT Traffic Management System, I'm sorry, TDOT Traffic Operations, as well as Murfreesboro has Traffic Operations Center, and Smyrna will be getting one as well. So we're beginning to integrate between them. Some of the future deployments, we're looking to the, we have two other phases after the short-term deployments, the intermediate term and the long-term. Intermediate term starts in about two to three years, completing the fiber network to connect dynamic message boards, connect between Traffic Operations Center, between traffic lights, also looking at ramp metering, some adaptive signal control, arterial dynamic message signs, overhead dynamic message signs as well, per lane, those type of boards. You'll see, you've seen them before in other larger cities where it's a board over each lane, and it may indicate that a certain lane is closed down, or suggested you shift over if there's an accident in the outside lane or inside lane. Just keep in mind that these, a lot of them, like the adaptive signal control, that's a further, kind of a step above an integrated, an intelligent transportation system, ITS system. Those are things that may be highly suggested to the town to integrate some of that into their system. It's not something that we have to do, but as we work back and forth with TDOT, with FHWA, we may see the direct benefit of that and want to take part in those items. It's not necessarily something that we're going to be forced to do. Finally, in the long-term, five to seven years down the road, we're looking at some hard-shoulder running vehicles to be able to run for short distances, on shoulders to add a second temporary, another temporary lane, speed harmonization, integrated staffing, some center-to-center communication, meaning better communication between TDOT Traffic Management System, their Traffic Operations Center, as well as Smyrna and Murfreesborrows as well. When major problems occur, if there's a fatality, a large car pileup or something between certain interchanges, they'll be able to communicate with us, and we'll be able to deploy different signal timings to allow people to maybe get off at Ammerville Road, go up 41, and then come back across to Sam Ridley to be able, and re-time, and then we'll be able to put in these signal re-timings to allow traffic to flow a little bit better around those accidents. And some dynamic speed lane merge control. That's all the, that's all I've already had for the presentation. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that?
If you have any questions, I've been sending you the minutes from these meetings each, each time you all get together. They're pretty voluminous, but they do have quite a bit of information. Tom, we appreciate you taking the lead on this on our behalf, and I think it's going to be a program that is going to help. I mean, I think you're exactly right. It's not probably going to cut a lot of time, but it hopefully will let people know that if I leave at this time, I should be arriving in Nashville by that time. That's kind of the whole meeting behind it.
You said.
So, yeah.
Tom, I know, I know you mentioned the construction letting in October. Are there timelines associated to the intermediate and the futures?
I guess with the, the intermediate, they're looking at, what, two to three years?
Two to three years. I think we're looking tail end of 2020 for those.
Will you come to the microphone, just so people on TV? You're fine, so people on TV can hear as well.
What allows it to be on TV? The timeline on it right now is towards the end of 2020. A lot of the improvements that you saw, and I guess you guys can appreciate, the short-term went out fairly quickly. So it was things that we knew would make an impact. We were able to easily analyze it, and we weren't having to deal with rideaway or utility concerns, and that's why all of that stuff was bundled and packaged. The fiber network, you probably noticed, was in both places. The reason being is because we have very tight rideaway in some of the corridors. It's going to require either more in-depth utility involvement, trying to get, make-ready work done, or in some cases, just buying rideaway so that we can actually bore the conduit through. That's why you see a lot of that stuff with the ramp metering. There may be one or two more lane extensions done with that one as well, but for the same reason. It's just that their footprints were going to require a much more involved process than we could stomach in the, the very short timeframe we had to get the initial stuff out.
Other questions?
One more question. What is speed harmonization?
Speed harmonization?
Sounds like I can drive fast with a lot of friends.
In rhythm, too.
It's basically getting everybody to kind of settle down and stuff like that. You, Tom alluded to the per lane type thing. Well, a lot of times what you see these per lane, and they'll be full color, I don't know if you've seen the difference between the DMS boards, but nowadays, everyone's going to the very eye-pleasing full-color DMS, and that's what they're looking to do. But these would spot over each lane and basically be a way to say, you're going 50 here, you're going 40 here. It's a good way to get your lane, for you to understand what's going on, so that you can avoid that plow-on-the-gas-and-slam-on-the-brakes-type scenario. You're starting to see people move at a more consistent speed. That way, I guess, it kind of makes sense that if everybody's just moving, even though they might be moving slower, it's still going to keep it, everything pushing, and keep things a little more, keep everything flowing, keep it a little bit more. I don't use reliable, but in some cases, that's kind of where we're going to do that.
Got you. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Three times.
We will now move into our meeting agenda, and I will call the meeting to order. Tonight, Chaplain Tim York from the Smyrna Police Department will be here to do our prayer, and our pledge will be done by Tom Rose. So if everyone would please stand and join us in our pledge and our prayer, please.
Our Father, we come to you tonight, and we're reminded of how wonderful it is to be an American. Thank you for letting us be born in this country, to live in this country, and experience just the privilege of the flag and the opportunity of freedom. Lord, we realize for many families today brings a lot of emotion, a lot of different thoughts, and so we pray for each family tonight. Lord, we thank you for our law enforcement officers. We thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our military, and we pray your blessings upon each one of them. Lord, we ask you to bless our city council tonight. Bless our mayor, those who serve on the council. Give them wisdom, give them direction. Father, we pray that you will continue to keep your hand upon our city and bless it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Tom? Ms. Diane, if you do roll call, please.
Councilman Cole. Councilman Morrell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adkins.
Here.
Mary.
Here. We'll move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the August 14th and August 30th, 2018 minutes. Jeff, are these in order?
They're in order.
Any additions or corrections? Then do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Item four is correspondence or communication. Anything, Brian or Ms. Diane?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to awards and recognition. Tonight, we are honored to have some individuals here with us. We have individuals from the Marines from Kilo Company, 3rd Battalion, 23rd Regiment, and sailors from the Navy Operational Support Center, Nashville. These individuals helped us at the Jeff Coos Memorial Dedication. They are out at the base, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate what they did. They were actually, the three that were able to be with us tonight were actually ones that presented the colors. And we also had some others that were unable to be with us that we have letters for as well, but I wanted you all to get an opportunity to meet these individuals. I can't tell you how much we appreciated what they did for us that day and how special it was on that day. So many of you here that I see were there the day of the dedication, and I talk to his mom, Jeff's mom, often, and there are so many different things when we talk that she will relive and talk about, and how special it was for, for them. So at this time, if I could have Sergeant Tony Callahan, Corporal Darrell O'Leary, and Private First Class Jordan Duran join me, please.
Come right up here, that way we can be telling TV. I hate for y'all not to be on TV. Okay. Hopefully, help me, Sydney, and Callahan. There we go. And O'Leary. Oh, Ms. Amber had them all in. So thank you so much for participating. You all did a great job that day. I know it was hot, but you all sure made it special. Okay. Now Chief Dale's our official photographer, so. Thank you all so much. Anything you all want to say? No? No? Okay. Thank you all so much.
I would also like to recognize the ones that weren't able to be with us tonight. We had Second Class Kane Mitchell, Lance Corporal Peyton Bearden, Lance Corporal Dakota McLeod, Lance Corporal Cole Cunningham, Lance Corporal Emery Settles, Lance Corporal Gregory Crowe, Private First Class Justin Howbrook, Lance Corporal Dustin Rogers, Lance Corporal Jacob Segura, Private First Class Brody Pika, Lance Corporal Andrew, Andrew Reiki, and Lance Corporal Giovanni Cesares. So thank you to all of those individuals who participated in the memorial dedication. We really appreciate it. Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda, and these items are considered items that do not need to be voted on individually, but if a council member has an item they'd like to pull off and have discussion separately, we can do that. I always like to read these, just so you know exactly what we are voting on. First, we have approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Greater National Regional Council relative to the Arts Builds Communities Grant from the Tennessee Arts Commission. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with inter, integral time, timekeeping system relative to the timekeeping software and terminals for the water treatment plant. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with MR Systems relative to the telemetry for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Paul Corporation relative to the microfiltration maintenance support for the water treatment plant. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Comcast relative to secondary internet service. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Cannon County Sheriff's Department relative to the donation of surplus police equipment. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Superior relative to software maintenance for the police and fire departments. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with the O'Donnells relative to the Depot Days Cruisin'. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with American Melody Carriage relative to the horse and carriage rides for the Christmas celebration at the depot. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sane Construction relative to Phase 1 construction of Cedarstone Community Park. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dempsey Dilling and Associates relative to the construction engineering services for Cedarstone Community Park. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Musco Sports Lighting relative to athletic field lighting at Cedarstone Community Park. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Kimmerly Horn and Associates Incorporated to conduct the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Mint Condition relative to the janitorial services. And the last item on the consent agenda is item O, consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and discuss individually?
I have one.
Sure.
Yeah. The Kimmerly Horn and Associates. I just had a few questions that I couldn't remember the answers to.
Okay. Then we will pull item M off from the consent agenda. Other than that, do?
Item F. Approval of the terms and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Cannon County Sheriff's Department relative to the donation, donation of surplus police equipment.
Okay. Is there another one? No? Then I will move for a motion to approve all of the consent agenda except for item F and item M.
So move.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, other than item F and M, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now we'll move on to item F under the consent agenda, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Cannon County Sheriff's Department relative to the donation of surplus police equip.
I'm going to turn this over to Chief and Mr. Hercules.
Okay.
Chief, you want to?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, Sheriff Young contacted me and has asked that a lot of those items he does not want, so therefore, we need to remove that from the agenda tonight, and we'll come back next month with the items that he does want. And then we'll also inform the council as to what we're going to do with the spare parts and products.
Okay.
All right.
So he didn't like our treasures?
I assume after he looked at everything, he decided he didn't have room for all of our treasures.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anything I might be able to use in my garage?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Light bar.
Jeff, is there anything we need to do vote-wise if we're not going to vote on this tonight? Do we need to deny it, or do we need to defer it?
I think it's stated within the record. You'll be fine.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Kimmerly Horn and Associates Incorporated to conduct the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Raquel?
I just couldn't remember. Was this bid out, or it was not bid out?
We went to RFQ for this, with questions or qualifications, and we evaluated, our evaluation committee took a look at it, ranked Kimmerly Horn, Kimley Horn first, and so then they submitted a proposal for that.
Okay. And then the fees, there wasn't a breakdown of them. Is it by hour that they came up with that final fee?
Usually what they do is they look at, I sent them all the buildings, I sent them some GIS information as well, so they can come up with linear miles of sidewalk, let's see, trails, and what's the other one? I forgot what the other one is. I think, oh, and sidewalks, I think I mentioned sidewalks in there. And what they did is they evaluated, they looked at how many miles of each of those we actually have based on our GIS information, and then looking at the different types of buildings, which ones would need have to be looked at from an architectural perspective for ADA compliance, and then broke that down by man-hours and times the rates, depending on the level of the person working on that portion of the project, and came out with the fee on the project.
Okay. So the self-evaluation is where they're actually going out and looking at the actual physical structures that we have?
Yes.
Because that's where the majority of the monies are.
Yes.
So that's why I was trying to see how they had come up with that actual cost.
Right.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Good. Anybody else? Then do I have a motion to approve item M off the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now move on to old business. Tonight, we have three public hearings. Our first public hearing is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 53.00 and 54.00, and Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.01. Kevin?
Yeah, the first item, the first three items are all related to the same thing. The first part of this is the plan of services for the annexation request. This is for three parcels of land, all requested by the same person, about over 11 acres of property. The plan of services puts everything in writing that we would be providing upon effective date of annexation, which is everything, all town services except for water, as this does fly within the Consolidated Utility District's service boundary for water. The planning commission did review this plan of service and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this? Comments? Okay. Then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll abstain. I've had some business dealings with this gentleman in the past.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention from Vice Mayor Adkins. Item B is also a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 53.00 and 54.00, and Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.01, containing approximately 11 acres. It's requested by S. Collins, Two Properties LLC. The properties are located at 7866 and 7906, Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, and 610 I-N-S Drive. This is a second reading. Kevin?
This is the, the annexation request and R3 zoning commensurate with the annexation. Nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. This is, again, it's three, three parcels totaling about 11 acres of land. It does, all surrounding zones- It does, all surrounding zoning in town is R3, with the exception of the Amberton PRD. The zoning in the county is RM. Again, the Planning Commission did review this, did recommend it unanimously. There is an existing single-family residence on each parcel, so we would be providing services to those three existing residences. And again, Planning Commission did review it and did recommend approval.
Questions or comments for Kevin or for our Planning Commission members? We've already discussed this. Yeah, okay, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Same, abstaining.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes with one abstention from Vice Mayor Atkins. Item C is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 18-24 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcels 53.00 and 54.00, and Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.01. Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34G, Group C, Parcel 14.01, containing approximately .96 of an acre. It's requested by Steve Kroger to go from C2 to PCD. The property is located on Sergeant Asbury Hanway and Nissan Drive. It is a second reading. Kevin?
Ms. Mayor and Council, again, there's no changes on this from what you looked at on first reading. This is a request to change the property from C2 to PCD, which is, would allow a very specific use, which is a car wash. That is no longer allowed in C2, it's only allowed in C5, as it falls under the automotive service and repair type of use. Access for this would be from Sergeant Asbury Hanway. They did submit a PCD request, and so we do have the proposed building and layout that was attached in your packet. Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Okay, questions or comments for Kevin or Planning Commission? I know you all had quite a bit of discussion.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to add. Anything from the elevations to the stacking and landscaping and whatnot. So we feel like we ended up with a good product here for what they want to bring in.
Well, I feel like the developers really worked with us on listening to some of the concerns and making those adjustments, so. Any other questions or comments before we move to the public hearing? Okay, then is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to our new business. We have four items under our Planning Commission report. Our first one is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of properties located on Tax Map 72, part of Parcel 9.00, and Tax Map 73, Parcel 14.00, containing approximately 25.2 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins. The properties are located at 4750 Amble Road and 7616 Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Ms. Mayor and Council, this is a request. It's in a very similar location to the request you looked at on second reading. In fact, our maps, the areas highlighted in kind of that yellowish-orange color are the parcels you just annexed earlier. This is a parcel nine, a portion of parcel nine is the rear of a larger tract. It is a larger 49-acre tract, it's about 19.2 acres. That parcel would have access through adjoining parcels that are owned by the same person or Antique Avenue. And then there is also parcel 14, does have frontage on Rocky Fork Amble Road. They are adjacent to parcels that have recently been annexed and zoned R3. The annex, the zoning for this, requested rezoning is R3 with this as well. And just barely touched a little bit of the Amberton PRD, and it also was, the zoning in the county is RM. Again, as far as services, this is provided, but all services would be provided except for water by CUD. There is one existing single-family residence on parcel 14. Parcel 9 is completely vacant, at least a portion that has been requested to be annexed. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval. 540 against with one abstention.
Questions for Kevin on this? Jerry, Mark, or Tim, anything you want to add? Don't all speak at once.
I'm going to be abstaining in this, so.
Oh, okay, so you have to remain quiet. Anything, Tim?
Well, I mean, if you look at it just from a continuity standpoint, it fits and it fills in at the same time. And, you know, it makes sense to bring this in as an R3 project.
Okay. If there are no other questions, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, Parcel 78.00, containing approximately .75 acres. It's requested by Jack Parker to go from C4 to PUD. The property is located at 1071 Rock Springs Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Ms. Mayor and Council, this is, is on Rock Springs Road. It's about 900 feet west of the Old Nashville Highway and Rock Springs Road intersection. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, C2, and C4. The proposed use on this, and the reason why they have to have requested rezoning, is a mixture of C4 uses as well as they want to have within the building an attached apartment. So it would be a mixture of the commercial as well as the residential use there. There is an existing house on the property that would be removed as a part of this project, and then a new building built. Again, the proposed use, the initial use is proposed as a dance studio with an attached apartment. It would, the use is requested as part of the PUD would be anything allowed in the C4 zone. They did cementify, they did have the layout, the proposed building, and everything was shown and was included in your packet. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions or comments for Kevin? I know this piece has been brought before us before, so. Anything you want to add?
Well, I just, I feel more comfortable with the PUD with the location, just in, you know, from a road perspective, and then from the C4, and then, you know, the R1. So, much more comfortable with this, and, you know, that's why we voted to approve.
It's a much lighter impact.
Yeah.
I think it's a nice compromise.
Yep.
So. Then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34, part of Parcel 52.04, containing approximately 8.5 acres. It's requested by Legacy Joint Venture to go from C2 to PRD. The property is located on Legacy Drive and Lee Victory Parkway. It is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is a rezoning request for a portion of a parcel, about 8.5 acres of an overall parcel. Property is accessed from Legacy Drive. There's also a roadway that has been partially built, called Legacy Court. And it has frontage on Lee Victory Parkway, but does not have access to it. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R3, R6, and C2. The proposed PRD is for 52 townhouses. Access would be from Legacy Drive via a private roadways. The rest of the parcel is developed with two commercial buildings, and those will have to be so divided in ingress, egress, easements recorded for access to those. There are also some existing and proposed public utilities that will have to have recorded easements as well. They did, is a PRD, and they did submit a, maps and packets of information for the type of buildings they're proposing, the layout, and all that. Did include that in your packet. The Planning Commission did recommend, review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Just, no question, just a comment. If you saw the packet, the buildings are very nice designed. It also leaves us room for the vehicles for parking and that type of thing, so it don't take up all the roads. So I think they did a nice job with the design on this.
This is something that we, as a Planning Commission, have been asking for, because they're, number one, they're low maintenance, we've got a master down. It's something that would fit our 55 and up community. The developers worked with us as far as not only the additional parking in the driveway, but we also have a couple of remote parkings for guests, so we keep vehicles off the roadways. And the other thing, this is a softer transition from a C2 to the neighboring R3. And it meets what we talk about in a comprehensive plan in a land use study as far as going from C2 to, you know, C4, and then a little heavier density to the single-family, and then single-family lower density. So this checks all the boxes.
The developer actually came back and removed some of the property to enhance the parking, which I really liked. They, you know, we've been dealing with a lot of density with some of our townhome projects. And it's become really the starter home, if you will. There's no single-family homes out there that are much affordable anymore. But because of this, they stepped up and agreed not to use any vinyl siding. It's all hardy brickstone, that kind of thing. So it's a, it's a much dressed up, much more dressed up product, and some recreation, things like that in the area. So it backs up to the big floodway over there. I think it's a good fit.
Other comments or questions? Then do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our last item under the Planning Commission report is consideration of the acquisition of property for the relocation of Nolan Drive.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is something the Planning Commission did review as a mandatory referral. They did recommend approval. You have an item on your agenda, two items down that I didn't realize that Jeff had submitted. So I will just relate to you the fact that the Planning Commission did recommend it, and maybe you can just take it up. Instead of taking any action on this item, just look at it at.
Under item D.
Under item D, yes.
I'd rather have it on there twice than not at all.
Exactly.
Thanks, Kevin. Under item B of new business, packaged liquor board report, there were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the clerk of the municipal and general sessions court to engage the service of a collections agency to collect delinquent municipal and general sessions court fees, court costs, fines, and fees, and this was a first reading. Jeff?
Mayor and Council, as you're aware, recently, the town has chosen a collections agency to collect the delinquent court costs and fines for the general sessions and municipal court sections per TCA 4024105. In order to do that, we need to pass an ordinance that states as you have before you.
Questions for Jeff on this?
I'm glad to see this coming forward.
I am too. Brian, I don't know, is there any way we can get updates on this periodically after it's been taking place for a little while, just so we can see how things are going?
Absolutely, as we progress, we'll make sure everybody's informed.
Great. Then do I have a motion to approve item C?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item D, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for the purpose of carrying out the Nolan Drive re- relocation project. Who's taking this? Mike, are you taking this, or Brian, or Jeff? Mike's going to take it.
We'll all take it.
I'll take it.
I know Kevin took this to the Planning Commission as a mandatory referral, but as we talked about in the workshop, we're working on finalizing the plans. They're pretty much done, and then working with the landowners to get them to donate the property. There have been easement from the airport, and then we're trying to get the two small pieces donated from the people that own the OK Mar building.
Questions for Mike on this?
Is there, is there any land, I mean, I think we're negotiating for all of it. There's nothing at this point that we would, that we're getting pushed back on at this point, is there?
No, sir, we, originally, we were looking at the detention area as well for a parking lot, but we're not going to do that parking lot right now, so we decided to hold off on that. So we're just asking for the two small pieces where the roads, basically where the three-way stop is now, and then near the skate center, we'd be crossing their property. And we figured if we, if the town council decides to, that we need that parking lot, then we would come back to them at that time. Part of their agreement was we would have to maintain that detention area, and I don't think we want to do that until we're going to actually use it.
You're saying they, is that the airport authority, or is that Kmart?
No, sir, it's the Kmart owners.
Okay.
Can you refresh my memory a little bit on timeline for this project?
Yes, ma'am, we're basically complete on our plans, but we don't want to put the bid documents out until we know exactly what we're getting if they're going to donate the property, because that could change a little bit of that. Also, the airport did ask if we clear out some of the trees where you could see the memorial from Nolan Drive, but that's also the approach. So if we take those trees down during construction, they don't have to come back and do it later, because they have a certain height they have to stay under. So as soon as we get this done, which we're hoping within the month, we'll put the bid out. But we met with Barge Solutions last week in regards to timeline. So I don't want to give you exact date, because we're really waiting on them.
Okay.
Am I saying that right?
We're also subdividing the property as well. So we're having to take time.
Okay, questions? Great, then do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to item E, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the increase in the monthly salary for the mayor, vice mayor, and town council members of the town of Smyrna. This is a first reading. Brian?
Yeah, I'd like to start us off on this, and I've asked Jeff Craig to make a presentation from our HR perspective. Just to remind everybody, you know, a couple of months ago, the court clerk, we reviewed her salary structure and made the recommendation to increase her salary. Along with that, we decided to look at all the elected officials, including the council and the mayor. We realized that there's not been an increase for the council or the mayor in over 20 years, closer to 25 years, there's not been an increase. You know, and we just want to remind everybody, we look at all employees on a regular basis. We look each year. We want to make sure that we stay competitive We want to make sure that we stay competitive so that we are treating our employees fairly. Plus, we're staying competitive in the marketplace to retain and keep good employees. And there's no reason we should not do the same thing as we look at the council and the mayors. And I applaud Mr. Gill, my gentleman before me, that started this process and then handed that ball off to me at the last work session. We also look every five years at a deep dive at where we're at in the marketplace on competitiveness. And I would suspect that going forward, that's something that we should do for all employees. And at that point, the council and the mayor are employees of the town. So with that in mind, I've asked Jeff Craig to take a look at the review that we made and share that information with you, and he's got a presentation. So Jeff, if you would do that, please.
Sure. Mayor and Council, Brian has kind of aptly discussed how we handle our compensation for the city. Each year, we do look at all the salaries for employees. And this past year, we did include council and mayor in that study. And it was a bit eye-opening at how behind we had become. And so you can look from the data that we've got on the screen, I believe it's in your packet as well. We did reach out to pretty much all the middle Tennessee cities that are peers, as well as other cities across the state that are similar in size, 30, 40, almost 50,000 in population. And you can kind of see some of the data at what the mayors were making, as well as what the council was being paid. Across the board, in most of these cities, we're also offering health insurance benefits, which the city of Smyrna does as well. When you basically look at all of the data and you get an average, which is what we tend to do when we look at salaries for our employees, the average pay for a mayor is about 1,700 bucks a month and a little over $900 a month for council members. There were several cities that did do a little bit of a discrepancy for the vice mayor. And so when you look at that data, it was my recommendation to do about $1,800 for the mayor and $1,000 for the council with a slight discrepancy, a difference for the vice mayor. This is in line with what our policy is for employees. We try to match the market and be slightly above the market to be competitive. And so that is why I recommended these numbers, especially since it may be a few years before you increase these again. So just a couple of notes, this does include a couple of updated figures from when we presented this at the council retreat in April. Rutherford County recently increased their pay for their council, their commissioners. So that's reflected in here as well. Just as a note, the numbers from Murphysboro, where the mayor was making $1,400 and council $1,150, that has been their rates for the last 13 years. So they've been making significantly more than the city of Smyrna for quite some time. So I think it's well due that we make some changes, get you guys as competitive as possible, treat all of our employees the same, and those are my recommendations. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have about the data.
Questions or comments for Jeff on this?
Jeff, one point that's come up a couple of times. Can you talk about the medical benefits that are offered to all employees, not just the council, but all employees and how that works?
Sure. Are you getting at like the types of options we have or the premiums or that we offer?
The premiums and how it comes out of the pay, how that's covered, that it's not included as part of anyone's salary package?
Sure, everyone pays premiums depending on what coverage you want, whether you want individual coverage or you want family coverage. And those premiums differ drastically between individual and family. Obviously, family is much more expensive than individual coverage. The city does also pay a portion of that premium. There are two options, the health savings account option, and then there's a traditional open access plus option with Cigna. It's a very good benefits package. It's very nice for employees. It's also a very nice benefit for council members as well. And this does seem to be the trend in the industry for other cities to offer similar benefits.
Other questions or comments on this? Do I have a motion?
A motion that we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second?
I'm standing.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Little discussion, just I guess. Having done this for a lot of years now, and many of you have, some of you have been here a little shorter of a time, but if it's been, if that's correct, 20 or so there plus years.
20 plus years.
It hasn't changed. I try to look at something in a fair prism, and I think that's the, probably the fair thing to do. And when I say that, I'm talking about the people up here that I work with, whether they agree or disagree with any kind of improvement. And also going forward, we're gonna be kind of setting a platform for those that follow us at some point. It'd been nice, I guess, if 10, 15 years ago, maybe that had happened and we wouldn't be sitting here having to make a decision like this. But the time that's involved in this, I don't think the public's quite aware of. And so out of fairness for each of the people that I work with up here, I try to be that guy. I want to make sure we're fair with everybody and that they're compensated in a way that it's not about us. We do this because we love our town. Most of us have grown up here, I think all of us have, and are invested in the town, regardless of what we're paid and why we're paid to do it. But out of fairness and out of time and out of the size that the city has become, we are all being, I don't want to use the word taxed, but taxed in a way that our time and our efforts and what we put back into this position isn't about money. It's not about money at all. But in fairness to those that do it, I think we have to be those people, so.
I agree. And I think when, when the clerk came to Mr. Gill and to Jeff and asked you all to look at the salary for that position, and Mr. Gill made the decision to look at all of the elected officials' positions, judge, clerk, council, I'll be honest with you, I was a little surprised at how off ours was in comparison to everybody else's. I mean, it's significantly different. And Mark, I will agree with you that we treat our employees very fairly and we make sure that they're compensated for the job we do, for that that they do. And I think it's only fair that the council's positions are compensated as well. I don't think that the amounts that we're looking at are unfair based on what you see that the other cities around us, that are our counterparts, are being paid. So if that's all that I have, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to add.
Sure.
One thing, and I think this is important, and Mark touched upon it. This is a look at a position raise. In other words, if this were approved, it's not a blanket across the board. In order to obtain this, you would have to seek and obtain reelection. So this isn't necessarily a salary raise for any one individual here. This is a council position raise, subject, and again, subject to receiving it, you would have to go through an election cycle, choose the run and actually be reelected in order for this to apply to you.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I was gonna say, being the deep person, certainly didn't take the job for the money. And feel, I actually have a, feel both ways, I guess, on it. Because I feel like I shouldn't be taking a raise if I'm elected next time. But yet, what I did say was when I took this position, that I would do what I felt was right for the city. And I, looking at these numbers, coming from a company that we used to look at them basically every year or so and try to make sure that the employees were paid. Along with basically other companies like us, we always tried to make sure that the employees were compensated correctly. So for that reason, I feel like it's the right thing to do.
Okay, anything else? Then we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm standing.
Okay. Ms. Diane, you good? Okay. That was a first reading. We will have a second reading on this next month, and there will be a public hearing. And so if there's anyone that would like to speak next month for or against this, we encourage you to come and let us know how you feel about this issue. In thinking about, in talking to Jeff Craig today and talking to Brian and to Jeff Peach, you know, this is probably one of the most awkward votes that I've had to make. I won't speak for each one of you, and it's just not fun having to vote for yourself a raise. And because it's been 25 years almost, I would like for us to look at maybe helping out future councils in that we put a resolution in place that every four years, the councils and mayor and any elected official within the town, that we look at their salaries, that HR looks at their salary. And then a decision can be made based on what the, survey's not the word, study shows. So are you all opposed to us discussing that at the workshop and possibly bringing it for a vote at the next council meeting in that it's every, that every four years? Or Jeff, you can kind of put together what you think might be best in regards to the resolution for us to look at at the workshop?
Yes, and then we can discuss it if there's something you want to change.
It would make things like this a lot less awkward.
Right.
And like I said earlier, I kind of wish that had been in place for many years in the past because we wouldn't sit here 25 years later thereabout trying to get fair again, so.
Well, and I think it helps ones who will be sitting in this spot after us, that if it's already in place, that it's set by resolution, that it's gonna be done every four years or however how often that we want it done, that it's looked at and then they can make a decision based on what the study comes back. So if y'all are not opposed, I'll have Jeff kind of look into that and bring it to us at the workshop. Work? Okay. Then we will move on to item F, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with S and ME relative to the geotechnical assessment of the portion of town hall. Here we have a little issue.
A little bit of an issue, sinking feeling about it. But a couple of months ago, a few months ago, Bill and grounds noticed that the double doors outside of codes departmentally into the front lobby were starting to rub a little bit. They fixed the problem. About 30, 45 days later, they noticed that there's a problem again. Also, they noticed some cracks on the brick fascia out front. And we brought SNME to come in and take a look at that. They said that they recommended, they're the same company that looked at this issue previously about eight years ago when we had some structural issues. So thought since they've already done the work here before, bring the same company back in to take a look at it, see what kind of structural issues may occur. That's what the $5,600 proposal is for.
Questions for Tom on this? Just out of curiosity, and you probably may not know, Bill may know, age of the building? Any idea?
No idea.
Just curious.
Smyrna Hospital.
Yeah, I was just curious. Okay. Questions? Comments? Think you should get a little age, sometimes you need a little.
A little facelift.
Little facelift, little lift here and there. So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You've got your facelift.
I do want to point out, all we're doing is getting the dollars to do the research. There will be another round of this once we find out what the issues are, so.
Okay. Item G is discussion relative to the AMC property on Plaza Drive.
Yeah, if it's okay, I'd like to make a few comments about this. Mike Moss approached me about a month and a half ago. AMC Theater Group has acquired the Carmike Cinemas Group. They have a piece of property, it's on the screen before you. It's about a three and a half acre tract that's next to us at the town center on Plaza Drive. AMC has put it in their books as excess property. They have right now no intent of building a theater there. Carmike purchased this property in 1994, I believe, was the date we found that the property was purchased. So AMC reached out to Mike to see if we had any interest in the property. Mike and I had a conversation with AMC about three weeks ago. They were hesitant to put a price on what they think the property would be worth. But we told them we had possibly some interest, knowing that, you know, three and a half acres next to the town center, and we pointed out several times, just in the last couple of meetings, that how quickly our town has grown and the need for property from, at different times. If we ever thought there would be an opportunity to expand the recreation center as far as the pool area or park or anything like that at the town center, this would be the time and the opportunity for us to be able to do that. So what we're asking for tonight is we would like to have council approval for us to enter into negotiations with AMC to see if we could work out some sort of amenable deal for the town to possibly purchase that property and add it to the inventory there at the town center based on our future needs.
Questions for Brian on this?
Did I cover that?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is appointment of one town council representative to the charity assistance fund board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2019. I've given each of you the opportunity to think about this. Is there anyone who wants to step up and do this? Why is everybody looking at their belly button? It's like when I taught school. You will? I was thinking I was gonna have to do it or make an HG do it. When you're not here, you get, that's right. Oh, I'm excited.
I'll do it.
You will? Great.
Need to move on for she.
That's right. So Jeff, you said this is my appointment, doesn't have to be voted on by council?
Correct.
Congratulations, Raquel Peebles. You are the new town council representative to the charity assistance fund board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2019. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think you all need to thank her too.
Thank you.
Anything under other?
We do have one item under other, Mike Strange from the utilities group. Do we need to? Okay, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
Okay. Status reports, anything? Announcements? Anything for announcements?
I do have something for announcements, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here to announce emergency purchases that we have made in the utilities department. Usually try to hit these every month, they've kind of piled up on me. This is not a votable thing. It's just transparency to show that we've made these emergency purchases and comply with the purchasing ordinance. First, from Vermeer, we purchased a Falcon F5 in housing. This is the thing that makes the boring machine directional and can point at whichever way you want it to go. Cost was $23,078.05. Second was CDW. It's their large format printer for GIS. It went out, and that's very pertinent for us. The cost after rebate was $5,864.68. Third was Franklin Miller. That is the taskmaster for the one-hour lift station that Nissan hits. What the taskmaster does, excuse me, what the taskmaster does, it will grind up all the rags, help with the grease, keep them off the pumps and the rotors. The next one is Stanzel Electric. We had a transformer inside the wastewater plant short out. We had to replace that, $5,781.27. Next one wastewater plant, also, we have two heat and air units that are on the roof of the operations and lab buildings that both went out, 17 years old. Couldn't get replacement parts for them, so building and grounds recommended replacement of those units. We actually bought the units themselves from Train, $9,835. And had it install, had the units installed by Allen Air Care, $10,295. And the last one is from Crom. It's for safety handrails for two of the water tanks for the water plant. They were having to kind of hop around and try to drag themselves around with a rope on top of some of these tanks, so that's not great. This was a capital item budget, but however, with the safety concerns, we did it as an emergency purchase, $15,950. And that brings us up to date and in compliance.
Great. Questions for Mike on any of these?
Thank you for your transparency.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Diane, anything?
I have nothing.
Brian, glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Officially behind the desk.
Behind the desk.
How's your first couple of weeks been?
It's been great, as always. It's been great. Great team, and I'm happy to be here and be part of it. Do have a couple of things that I just, you know, observing today is 9/11. 17 years ago, we experienced what is probably one of the greatest tragedies on US soil. And, you know, it's a special day for many people for many reasons, but I think it's also appropriate that we recognize our first responders, not only across the country and our soldiers across the country that have defended us, but also here locally. And I just, I know Chief Bill Colberson is here in the audience and Chief Arnold is here in the audience. And I just want to personally and on the record, say thank you to our first responders and the work they do. They do a tremendous job, so thank you both and please share that with your staff. The only other thing, I know there's a couple of these that I've got that you probably have for dates, so I'm not gonna take the DPO day or anything away from you, so. The last one I have, though, is I would like to congratulate the Smyrna Rotary on a successful Wings of Freedom Fish Fry this past weekend. I've heard preliminary numbers, close to 2,000 people came through there. I know that they were already over their last year's goal as far as monetary success. They had a goal of $180,000. I'm not gonna be surprised to learn in the next couple of days at a Rotary meeting that they hit that. they hit that. But I also want to acknowledge Jerry Short and Tim Morell, who serve on our council, were actually Rotarians, were out there working pretty hard. I had the pleasure of earning my stripes in my apron this year, over one of those cookers for about four hours.
And HG, too, even though he's not here.
Yeah, HG, I'm sorry, HG as well, yeah. It's hard to remember HG when he's at a soccer game, so I'm sure he'll go back and watch this, and I'll get a phone call about that, so. But did want to recognize that, and thank the Rotarians across the town of Smyrna and Laverne that put in the time and effort to pull off a really great event.
When you look at the amount of money that they have put back into this community in nonprofits, it's pretty amazing. You know, it's a great event, people get to come see each other you may not have gotten to see in a year's time, but the cause is something that's pretty special, and I think makes our community really special, so thank you to you all.
And Chief Bill also had the fire department and our big flag out there, and it was kind of a beautiful back set, backdrop.
Sure was.
To the whole event, so thank you.
Agreed, agreed. Jeff?
Nothing, ma'am.
Raquel?
Several of the things you probably have on your.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have Braxton on your list?
Um, I was gonna talk about Firehouse tonight, no, go ahead, though.
No, go ahead.
The only thing I had was Firehouse for tonight. Did you have something else?
He, the Blue Coast Burrito next week?
I don't have the dates for that, do you have the dates for that?
That's in the 19th.
Yes, next Wednesday.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll let you talk about it, then. I just have one thing to say, then.
Okay.
I just want to wish my daughter a happy birthday, she turned 15 on this past Saturday, so.
Very nice. Tim?
Okay, well, as Raquel mentioned, Blue Coast Burrito's having a benefit on the 19th for Braxton. And all, I forget, there's a percentage of the proceeds that will go toward the family, and it's a very important cause, so this is at the Blue Coast in both Smyrna and Murfreesboro, they're all participating, and it is on the 19th, so from lunch to dinner. So I plan to be there and eat, and support the family.
And I'm not sure if you have to mention that you're doing for that.
You do, you do, thank you.
I think you do, yeah.
Well, between the three of us, we'll get it.
That's right. Anything else?
Brian is being a little humble here, he probably worked that grill a little bit more than four hours, but it was a great event, and, you know, I'm trying to think of the timeline, over the past 10 years, Rotary's put a million dollars back into local charities from the work that we do there, and some of the other things that we do, so it's a great event. My wife loves attending, she does not love me coming home after being a catfish. As a matter of fact, she worked out something with Chief Culberson, where there's a truck on standby when I get home, and I get hosed down before I'm allowed in the house. But it's a great evening, other than the impromptu bath in the front lawn. And I do want to thank the community for coming out, and when, you know, community, individuals and businesses, we all rallied together for this, and it's a great cause. And we honored the Purple Heart recipients, and I understand there wasn't a dry eye in the house when those men and women stood up and were recognized, and it's, it ties in very closely to 9/11, and the sacrifices that our soldiers and first responders make on a daily basis.
I think it was a spinoff from Granddaddy's Fish Fry.
It is, it is.
And I think he would be very proud to know that that many people are still supporting the event, and the number of charities that are benefiting from the hard work that the Rotary Club has put in. So glad to see a tradition carrying on. Jerry?
I'll just carry on to what you guys were talking about the Rotary. It was my first time to be on the other side of this Fish Fry, and it was amazing just to watch how much work went into that. You go there and you see it, and you just think, okay, I'm coming to eat my fish and talk to different people, but just starting from months and months ahead of doing the planning, and then all the work that was done. I was sitting there on a Saturday morning, we were putting the things together, and Jerome was pulling out these plans, and he had exactly where the tables were gonna be, and how many feet apart they were supposed to be, and it just, it's pretty amazing. I was very, I was honored to be a part of it, sure was.
Great. Steve?
I think you probably have most of the events, I seen this popping up on the screen over here, so I think you've got most of the events that I was gonna mention. There have been quite a few new businesses open up over the last several years, but they continue to come in almost daily. So I encourage you, since in honor of HG's absence, I encourage you to shop local. I can tell you that I'm doing my part at Genardi's, and Dunkin' Donuts opens ribbon cutting tomorrow, so I'll be sure to get that one as well, but at 8:30, 8:30, excellent. That's all.
Well, I think what I had to say has been said, but I would like to repeat one thing, I think it's ultra-important. At the Fish Fry, the whole thing is not so much about fish, it's about community, and it's about who they honor at these events. And I agree with Tim, the Purple Heart recipients that were there that night humbles me when I see people come walking through there with the color guard, and knowing that they've served the way that they have. Well, I tell you what, it makes you appreciate what they did. There's a lot of people that have served, sacrificed their lives, their families have suffered because of it. So I give a lot of shout-out to those that serve our country tonight, not just now, all the time, but those that have served and sacrificed. We have a lot of freedom here. We sat up here tonight, we have a difference of opinion on some things, but that's freedom. So it's kind of nice that we can do that. And so, thank you for those that have served our country, worn the uniform, male, female, all those people that have served. And I come from a military family, so I know what it feels like to have parents that served our country. Wished I had, really, I wished I'd had an opportunity to do that, and I didn't. So to those that served at the Fish Fry, thank you for, and Carolyn Peebles, who put that together with the Purple Heart veterans, it's just awesome. So that's what it was about for me. Fish was good, though, guys, it was really good. Pat, I know you're back in the audience, I want to thank you for letting us borrow him for as long as we have. We've kept him pretty doggone busy. Pat's the better half of Brian Hercules, she's in the back, back there. And we're excited to have Brian here, he's doing a wonderful job, he's hit the ground running. I know, I know it's a big sacrifice of time. Just like those of us here, we, our spouses and significance, understand that we're giving a lot of our time to this community.
We love it.
And that guy is, too. So I just want to tell you, thank you for understanding how busy we have to be sometimes. Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
The list I was given tonight is actually quite long, so Depot Days and Car Show. The Car Show is Friday night, September 28, from 6:00 to 9:00 on Front Street, is a classic car cruise-in, as well as a wine tasting by Smyrna Divine Wine and Spirits. Then our 12th Annual Depot Days will be Saturday, September 29, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Front Street. There'll be over 100 booths of vendors, food businesses, beer garden, and local artisans represented at Depot Days. We will have live music on the Nissan Performance Stage and the Carpe Cafe Stage. There will be inflatables for kids to jump on at no charge, and train rides for only a dollar, as well as many other kid-friendly activities. This is definitely a family fun-packed weekend, so we invite you out to Front Street for Depot Days. The last day for Farmer's Market is Saturday, September 15, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 on Front Street. It's hard to believe that's already over, I'm sure Nikki's not saying that, but seems like it just got started. The Town of Smyrna and the VFW Veterans Day Celebration will be Sunday, November the 11th, at 11:00 AM at the Captain Jeff Coos USMC Memorial. This year will mark the 100th anniversary, later known as Veterans Day, and we invite everyone from the public to come out on November the 11th at 11:00 AM. Pretty exciting, Smyrna TV received the first-place honor in the National Awards Program. It was recognized nationally at the 33rd Annual Government Programming Awards Program, which was held in Philadelphia on August the 30th. The program honors excellence in broadcast cable, multimedia, and electronic programming produced by local government agencies. Smyrna TV was honored with the first-place award in the Edited Community Event Coverage category for our Independence Day Celebration 2017 by the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. And Smyrna TV also received an honorable mention in the same category for the Special Olympic State Golf Championship 2017. So John Lanza and the individuals who work with him, they do a great job of getting the word out of what's taking place in our community, so hats off to John on these awards. We are now accepting applications for the Town of Smyrna Arts Commission. The Arts Commission works to expand the public experience for the visual arts, and promotes artistic and cultural development of the community, and supports diversity in the arts. If you are interested in serving on the Arts Commission, you can apply at the Town of Smyrna website, or contact Tiffany Lawson for more information. We also still have pavers, and t-shirts, and magnets and decals for the Jeff Coos Memorial. If you are interested, you can purchase t-shirts, those items at the SOAC Center or here at Town Hall. On Friday, the 21st, is Reading in the Schools Day. Hopefully, there's some of you that will be out reading in the schools. I think I have six schools that I'm gonna be at that day, so if you have not gotten a call but are interested in reading, I'm sure we can place you with a school, and we would love to do that. Saturday, Brian and I will be making a little trip to Sevier County with quite a few of the county commissioners and mayors from the other municipalities to look at their solid waste facility. So we'll be spending an entire day together on the bus.
Talking trash.
Talking trash. Which I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of that going on. Do you want to talk a little bit about your favorite new establishment in Smyrna, because they're gonna be holding a ribbon cutting on the 19th at 4:00 PM?
Yep, Genardi's opened up on Front Street, they're, I think it was the Flower Pot, is that what it used to be?
Used to be.
Yeah, it's right, right, right on Front Street. If you haven't had a chance to visit, it's, actually, it's all homemade ice cream and some amazing flavors there. They've got salted caramel, coffee, I had the cherry mash, which was amazing, it's like chocolate-covered cherries, so great, great folks down there, very friendly, and ice cream is amazing, so I encourage you to give them a try. They are open Friday and Saturday nights till 10:00, and every other night except Tuesday until 9:00.
Sounds like you know their schedule pretty well.
I was there Sunday night at 8:00 o'clock, so, yeah, I know it pretty well, and trying to see if I can get them into some sort of frequent flyer program.
We went out on their soft-opening night, and they are just the.
Didn't get invited to that, I don't know what happened.
I saw it on Facebook, and so we piled up, piled up in the car and headed out. Poor Parker didn't know we had to go in anywhere, and he was a little embarrassed by his attire, but he went on in anyway, but they are the nicest family, and, you know, it's just nice to have another establishment down on Front Street that you can go in, get to know the people, and then bring your ice cream out, sit on the bench, watch the world go by. And it's so peaceful, and there is nothing prettier than Front Street at night, so I would encourage you to get out and enjoy some ice cream. Their ribbon cutting is the 19th at 4:00. Smyrna Junior Pro Football on Sunday, the 23rd, at 2:00 PM, if you'll make sure to put that on your calendar, is their 50th anniversary. Is that right? Yes, 50th.
What is that?
It is 2:00 PM on Sunday, the 23rd. If you ever cheered in their program, played in their program, or coached in their program, they are asking that you come be a part of their celebration. They are planning on doing it up big, so we are inviting you out to that.
At Lee Victory?
It is at Lee Victory, at the football field. And tonight is the fundraiser for Braxton at Firehouse, is that correct, Chief? Yes, okay. So if you've not had dinner yet, and want to get out and support a great cause, you can go check out Firehouse tonight, and have your supper, and help out a family that is going through some tough times right now. Last thing I have, I put my pen on today, and I will tell you, you know, last night I had trouble sleeping, thinking about 9/11, and I guess it was seeing the things on Facebook, and I just can't believe it's been 17 years. I think all of us know exactly where we were when we either got the phone call or saw it on TV, and I hope it's something that we never forget, that we always remember that feeling that we had, but then we also remember the patriotism that we all felt in the days that followed. So I am proud to be an American, I am proud of my country, I'm proud of those that serve our country, and have done what they did so that we can all have our freedoms. So when I put my pen on this morning, that's what I thought about. So if there is nothing else to come before this board, then we are adjourned.